Thank you, Chris. Delegation, any comments you'd like to make or questions, Dave and Renee? Got an opportunity right now. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Chris, for your honesty, for sure. You have no answers, and we appreciate that honesty. We don't mind no answers right now. We're looking for answers in the future. And all your research is great. Research is good, but what I'm wondering is, okay, you gave us all these suggestions, and I'm sure most of us who have experienced flooding, we're going to take your suggestions and we're going to do what we can. But are you saying then that the town sewer system, all the pipes underneath our roads, and I don't know anything about sewer systems, they don't need to be replaced? Or is your research going to show that those pipes do need to be replaced? Because like I said, 10 years ago, it said that we're not prepared to build for the future, and we have been, and I like that for Essex. But are you saying those pipes don't need to be replaced? Like, and the flooding, you said about the flooding, that, where is it here? I wrote it down. One thing I've written down here is that, are you doing this all yourself? Like, are you going into homes and inspecting yourself? Could we get other people that possibly that we could, the town of Essex could pay, to come into my home and come into their home? Because I don't know what the heck, you know, I can pull these caps and flush my toilets and see where it's draining, that kind of stuff, but I really don't know what you're talking about. Could we get somebody to come into our homes and inspect all of our homes? Is there financing there for this? And one other thing, is this, this is a huge financial burden, I'm sure it is. Is this a big issue? Honestly. I mean, I'm sure you must have an answer for that. That financially, we just can't change the sewer system under our roads. That you, we'll do our part, but how much, really? All this research is good, but how much is going to get done underneath our roads? I don't know.
Do you like to answer this, Chris? Please?
I can try, yeah. Definitely any improvements that are made to the infrastructure that's already in the ground will cost, will cost. No questions. As far as me stating if the sewers are adequate or inadequate, no, I didn't say either. I said they were obviously inadequate for that storm moving forward. Are they considered adequate? That's, you know, for what storm? For what level? So, that's something that...
They haven't been adequate for the last 10 years. That's what I'm hearing anyway. They haven't been adequate. So now they're making changes, which is great, we can make those changes, but...
That's okay. Through your worship as well. I have, I mean, I've been doing a lot of the work as far as the research. We'll have this consultant on board. They'll have a team. I have my fellow coworkers. I'm hoping that what we produce on the website will help you, take you through those steps for your own. If there are instances where you don't know, by all means, call the town and we'll definitely, we'll definitely help you out that way.
David?
Well, just a couple things. I mean, the process, the process that you went through, I'm willing to do whatever I need to do at my house to fix if there's the broken pipe that you show around the house, or any, any pipes that need fixing, but I can't control your end of it. And that's the part that bothers me. I can't control the crap coming in my basement. There's no, I have no, I can't, there's not one measure that I can do to fix that. I can look, because I, and I've already made the improvements. I brought the plumber in. I put the camera down the line. We've done a little bit of work in, in, in my driveway also because of, of that issue of the flooding, but I, I've done all that. So now I know that I'm going to take my basement in, in the stormwater and I'm throwing it out my yard. I'm taking my backup pump, and by the way, I have two backup pumps. I'm going to take my backup pump and I'm going to throw it out in the yard so that when I get to that level, that it's, I'm not going to be affected. But I cannot control the sanitary, and that's a big, big issue also. I mean, we can talk about how the road floods and we, you know, your diagram and everything else, but Chris, if, that should not be happening in an adequate system. Is it because of undersizing, as Renee said? We don't know. You have no answers tonight. That's the key that I want to really focus on, is the part of the sanitary coming in, because that's what destroys homes. Not only, I mean, Russ said that flooding is the new fire, you know, that the presentation that got put on, but, but that, that's, that's my biggest issue is the sanitary. And, you know, now I'm starting to get from the delegation and, you know, some questions, and I don't know if it's appropriate to ask the questions accordingly, because I, you know, but, or the delegate, or, you know, maybe somebody can put a motion forward and maybe ask people to ask their questions, because I, I mean, I'm sure there's a lot of them.
And we'll get around to that, Dave, eventually.
Okay. Well then, can I ask a question? Another question?
Sure.
To you, Chris? Because this, this is you as the expert. The question was, why was the lagoon filled in? Why isn't the processing plant able to put overflow of sewage into the lagoons to process it later? And why is there a solar farm that's being made where the lagoons, where this water should be going? At the lagoons where this water should be going? Is that, is that true that you can put the sewage into the lagoons and process it later to send it out?
Through your worship, no, that's not true. The lagoon system was the old sanitary system. That used to be the treatment. That was it. They went to the lagoons. It was an old-fashioned, outdated system. At the time the new plant was installed, those lagoons have become defunct or decommissioned. They're basically Ministry of Environment and Ministry of Natural Resources dreams over there. So they're, they don't, they no longer take on sewage. My certificate of approval with the Ministry of the Environment is for the sewage to run through the plant itself, not for the sewage to go into the lagoons, contaminate them, and then back them out again. Those lagoons have been, we've done a remediated site condition survey on those lagoons in case something, we wanted to change development, and in the case of the one lagoon that was filled in and solar was put on there, that's a lease agreement that's taking place with the town. So they're not needed for that system, but that's not to say that, you know, that's something that can be looked at as far as using them for an overflow.
Okay, Dave. If you, if the delegation's finished, I have council votes first.
Thank you, worship. First, before I speak, I want to take opportunity to ask, I'm looking for a second or if I could, if there's anybody here tonight, you know, your time is obviously worth something. I feel as though it's worth it from me to hear you out. So if there's anybody out there, again, if I can get a second or in support to allow anybody who's here to speak in openness tonight about your problem as, as you see it.
Move by Council Vote, supported by Counselor Scott. Any questions to the motion? On favor of that motion? Motion carries. Comment from Deputy Mayor Malice first.
Thank you, through your worship. Renee, I just wanted to say that comment that you read about the, in Windsor Star today from, that the Windsor Star had quoted me on, was referring to McGregor, the McGregor pumping station. It wasn't the Essex pumping station.
Yeah, I understood that.
Yes. And Amisburg runs the sanitary system there. We've been pushing them for 10 years to try and change that pump.
I understand, just for Renee's favor, that there is a following, the Essex pumping system, McGregor and Amisburg running in, who's going to make their, where the tasks go? I read the article, I was reading the article, it's McGregor, I wrote...
Okay. I thought maybe you thought it was, I was quoting the Essex pump, and I wasn't, I wasn't saying anything about the Essex pump.
Somebody did send me a call about 10 years ago, there was a four step...
But it was the McGregor sanitation system.
10 years ago?
10 years ago. Yep. Thank you.
Mr. Nepse?
Thank you, worship. I just wanted to make one other comment on that note, Counselor Mosh, is that the expanded scope of works for the, the engineers that we're looking at, as far as investigating the issues that happen in Essex Center, are also, we're looking to expand that into the McGregor Center as well. So I think that's important to note right now.
Counselor Bondi?
Thank you. I certainly don't want to be the bad guy here. I just would like to ask that if we could keep the comments to about two minutes from each person, because I want to get through everybody. We have another public delegation as well, and I wouldn't mind, I would love to hear from everybody. I encourage that, call, email, et cetera. But I feel like we almost should have had an entire meeting on drainage. Like, it's, it's certainly an important issue. Like, we should have had, this, there is a process to get on our agendas, and not everybody here is on the agenda. So in, in respect to everybody else that is here, I would just like to keep the comments brief. I think we do have a picture of what's going on. Of course, I want to hear from everybody, but there is still a council agenda to get through.
Okay. Thank you. We do have our clock up here. It's not on right now, but we can turn it on. And when you do come down to the seat, would you give us your name and address, please? Okay? You want to start lining up? Here we go.
Can everyone hear me? Can everybody hear me? Okay? Okay. My name's Julie Campbell. I live at 136 Oak Drive in Tully Meadows. You can start my two minutes. What I just want to say is, though I understand everything that's going on, I also want to put on the table that perhaps we can have an interim solution put into place as well. Obviously, I think, first off, if I can make a suggestion, that I think current infrastructure, all new home buildings and things like that that's currently going on should be halted until we can actually have the results from the data put forward, because we do feel, many of us feel, that as you increase the houses and the homes in our neighborhoods, that it's just putting and taxing our systems, and it's just going to cause more flooding, or it's going to increase the possibility of more flooding. So I want to put that suggestion forward. And the other point I want to put forward too, has to do with our property taxes. As Mr. Cassidy has said, we have run into the point where we now have lost space in our homes that we can use. He is no longer fixing his basement. I can, this is the last time we will have insurance to fix our basement. We are, can no longer put anything of value in our basements because we can't afford to replace it. So the square footage of everybody's basement is no longer useful, but yet we're still paying on that. So perhaps maybe... So perhaps maybe the town can take a look at how our houses are valued right now, because we have lost equity, and we no longer will be able to sell them at the property value that we're paying our taxes on. And that's all I'm going to say at this time. Thank you.
I'm Joyce Reom, and I live on, on Kimball Drive. Just an Essex, new Essex resident, seven years ago, spent $27 in Tecumseh, no problem. So we have a nice new town home. Sump pump, backup sump pump, the check valve on the sewer system, which I didn't know until tonight that your street needed to flood, which it has before, so that's, you know, I guess that's fine. But we had seven new townhomes put up, and I hate, I hated to find out that, you know, our new neighbors who had just moved in got flooded. But I'll tell you, I was glad that the rest did too, because 21 out of 25 all had sewer in their brand-new homes. And some people are moving into these seven new townhomes. And, I mean, we moved to Essex because we thought it was a nice area to be, the town home concept. Our basement is a shambles now. It was all finished. And I want to know why. I hear the tractor backhoe, I should know the thing, because my husband hauls them all the time. They're, they're digging new townhomes. Like, maybe it's just coincidence that every, in our street, it all flooded then, but it's a brand-new street, the seven new ones, backup. Like, it's just gross. I didn't realize till the next morning when my husband went down and said, "That's not soap from the dishwasher." And I'm, "What the heck is that toilet paper? Ugh." Made me sick. Made me sick. So they shouldn't be putting up any more houses. I mean, they'll be going in our back, like, you know, the field behind us? That's fine. I hope that they do. That's the idea of it. But I don't want to go through this again. I don't want to go through this again. And, you know, that's it.
Thank you. And we are taking notes, believe me. I can see three or four of them, so.
Joe Guerin, you can hear me plenty good. One Row Court in Essex. We're in a 20-year-old subdivision. We've lived there for 16 years. We keep talking about this big rainfall we had, and how that, our system and no system will keep up with it. How do we explain the houses around me, Mr. Cassidy's houses, that have flooded on other rainfalls, not near this much rain, two, three, four, five times? I'm a little concerned about, I know we're looking at the, the big rainfall we had and their system couldn't keep up, but I, I don't think I heard an answer yet as to why their houses are flooding on other occasions when we didn't have near that amount of rain. We've had, I have neighbors that live right next door to me, three, four times, that night they didn't even flood, which left me very baffled. I don't understand how our system works, and I don't think that was properly explained. So if, Mr. Nepse, if you can maybe give some thoughts to that and let us know what you think is possible, why other houses are flooding three, four times on other rainfalls that were not as severe as the last one?
My name is Robert Marian. My wife is Irene. We're one of those new townhouses. Our welcome to Essex was, we were there a week and a half, and our basement flooded. A week and a half, and it's totally finished basement. I spent big, big dollars to move to Essex. We thought it was a nice town. We're finding out it's not. I don't have CoachCo, I don't have telephone on a TV, we don't have internet for six weeks. We have no communication with anybody. Our basement flooded, so all this stuff you were saying, it's about checking your house for pipes and backup valves, we got all that. It's brand-new. Six weeks old. Our basement flooded. So I'd just like to say, it's not the houses. It might be in some of the older ones, but it's certainly not our house. Everything's brand-new. It's what's out on the street, and that has to be rectified. We're already talking about, we've been here not even two months, we're talking about moving. This, we've been treated unjustly in this town. So I just want to let you know.
Rick Pascoe, Essex, Ontario, 224 Bryan West. I'm not fixing my basement either. It's the second time in five years for my brand-new problem. And both times I had to shovel out the O'Henrys out of my basement, which I did personally both times. And I understand these backwater sewer valves have been available for 40 years. I don't do contracting. I didn't even know what the hell that was. Somebody asked me about it, and I thought it was that little thing on the SIMPIM. I didn't even know what it was. So I just spent my own money to put a sewer backup valve in. In healthcare, if you don't do something that you should have done, then you're responsible. So I want to know, how come 13 years ago there was no bylaw to protect me by making the contractor put in a backwater sewer valve? Because I didn't even know what the hell that was. I did notice that when I put up a shed, there was a bylaw telling me how big my shed could be, but there was nothing putting in there to protect me from shoveling shit out of my basement.
Glenn Mills, I live at 84 Townsview Court. I've been there 14 years, and I can tell you this, I've never been able to canoe on my street until the new subdivision that went on on Gallows Drive. I have never seen water like that in my entire life, and I do have some concerns as well as sewage. I have never had sewage in my basement again, and it's a little bit disturbing to hear Sherri say, "Well, you know, maybe we can keep it to two minutes." Sherri, do you have any shit in your basement? Just curious. Because honestly, your attitude sometimes is absolutely brutal. You're lucky you're acclaimed. I don't even know how you got in.
My name is Julian Beaumont, and I live at 58 Townsview with my husband. I have to tell you, this is not the first time I have come to council with my concerns. Our house has flooded multiple times. We've done multiple remediations, because we pay our own money to have people come in and say, "Oh, maybe if you do this, do this, do this." This is my super system, this will... But at the end of the day, no one's willing to stand behind and guarantee that our house will not flood. We no longer have insurance. I no longer have a basement that we can use. It's glorified storage. I can't keep anything of value down there. Our house flooded two weeks or two months before our oldest son got married. We have absolutely no photos of our child getting married in his house that he grew up in, because I had two levels of furniture shoved into one. I had a 90-year-old grandmother who was willing to miss her grandson's wedding, because she didn't want to be in imposition, because everything was everywhere in the house, and it was in such disarray. I'm tired. I, I can't put the for sale sign on my house, because who's going to buy my house? Absolutely nobody. I don't care if I listed my house for $100,000. No one is going to buy my house. No one. I pay, I pay taxes. I did everything that everybody said. I mean, I've, I've got enough firepower in my sump pump area to suck wallpaper off a wall. And I'm glad that the street floods, but guess what? I can't have it keep coming in my basement. I can't keep going out to dinner with my husband, and when the rain starts to fall, we can't worry about each other. Hurry up and eat. Hurry up and finish your evening, because we got to rush home, because God forbid we get water again in our basement. We're tired. And I'm sure, like you and everybody else in this room, we work damn hard, and we pay our taxes, okay? We don't, we don't expect our houses to flood like this. We do not expect that, okay? When you read in the paper that the capacity of the sewage treatment plant was at max and, and was triple the volumes, that tells you there's an issue. Maybe my neighbor didn't flood because my neighbor's doing something to mitigate his, his problem, right or wrong, so he doesn't have water in his basement. But I play by all the rules, and I do everything right, and I still get water. How is that fair? There's something that needs to be done, and it needs to be done, because at the end of the day, you're going to have people move out, you're not going to have any new families want to come live in the town of Essex, you're not going to have any kind of tax base, and therefore this town will crumble. And I don't think that anybody here who's sitting here today wants to see that. We all moved to Essex or stayed in Essex for our particular reasons. So we need to work together to find a solution, so we can live in our homes, so we can raise our children, our grandchildren. And people want to come and live in the town of Essex. That's like, "Oh, my God." When you say, "Where do you live?" "I live in Essex." "Oh, I hear they have a flooding problem." I would never move to Essex. So I, even though it's, it's an election time, we need to work together. We need to find a solution, because, I don't know about you guys, but we're tired. We're more than tired. I, I can't, our basement will stay unfinished. Like I said, it's glorified storage. That's all it is, and that was our dream home. Thank you.
As Chris pointed out earlier, anything we do is going to cost money, but seeing as it's election time, there's been very few of you who haven't come to my door with some kind of pet project that you're going to drop money on in the future. Money that I haven't paid yet. So how about we worry about the infrastructure, and then we can, you know, put splash pads and whatever else in.
Nope? There's no one else, I will turn it over to Council Folks.
Thank you, worship. I'm just going to take a second of people's times. I, I want to make it very clear here this evening. I think if, if anybody knows me and the way I run my political business, I have no interest in making election gain. None. None whatsoever. So if anybody here, when you hear me speaking tonight, I want you to know it's Randy Volk's speaking. It's not Counselor Randy Volk's who's, who's jockeying for some elected position, because the commitment I'm going to make tonight, in the event I don't get reelected, and I can tell you, where's Jason? Jason, I agree with you, my friend. I see tons and tons of political positioning. Stuff that I know for a fact, as I hear, will never come to fruition. It'll never happen, and it's just a fallacy and it's false hopes. But I'm, I'm going to tell you, people here tonight, during the flooding, I was going through trying times myself. Extremely trying times. And I did take the opportunity to go out and work with the people in my neighborhood. I see good friends in here tonight, who I was at his house and at their house, literally setting pumps up in their basement with them. Pumping their basement, going back to my place, getting extra pumps. My basement too, after I got done at their place, I went home and found my basement wet. So I feel your pain too. But I want to know, I want to tell you something, and I'm going on the record for it. During my absent period, I too browsed through the Essex Free Press. You know what I seen in the Essex Free Press? I seen this, this council. I seen Counselor Baker. I seen different people of administration making, making suggestions that we're going to do something. So here's what I want you to know. When council asked, we want to know what we can do, knowing is nothing. It's absolutely nothing. I'm, I look around, I know there's people in this room that know lots of stuff, but actions is the next thing. Knowing does really nothing to, to keep your, your, your basement, basement dry. I warned administration, and I warned council during the flooding process, that we're careful with what, with what we promised people, because of the nature of the storm. And I don't want to get into the discussions of the nature of the storm. Here's what I know. This town, this council gave a direction to administration to work on it. And when that direction from council is given to administration, administration is at their disposal. So when I look at Chris Nepse, when I look at Russ Phillips, you know what they're doing? They're doing what they're told to do. One, they may argue that, to what, to what point? Do they take their own ownership and their own, their own discussions into hand, but council directs them? And council gave them a direction to do something for you people. So with that being said, and, and I want Donna to help me out a little bit here, because in order to fix the problem, if there is a problem discovered, where the problem is discovered to fix, when you talk about, I want one person come up and they talked about cost. I think, I think, I believe, a 1% tax increase is reflective of $100,000 in that neighborhood. 1%. When we raise our taxes 2%, we're, we're struggling as, as diligently as we can as a council to arrest the expenses, to bring that down to 2%, because we know people are challenged every day. They're challenged every day with gas prices, food prices, family, whatever it may be. So when I look at doing an infrastructure repair, it's millions of dollars. And that's why I'm, I was concerned with what council was telling people about fixing the problem. But here's what I know. They committed to it. I didn't commit to it. I wasn't here. They committed to it. So I'm going to tell you this. I'm going to see their commitment through, come hell or high water, because they committed to you people to fix the problem. That's what they did. So if I don't get reelected, I'll be sitting out there right beside Cassidy, arguing with you, because this council committed to it. I heard it. I read it. I seen it. So what I'm going to do now is I'm just going to sit here and shut my mouth, which I have a hard time doing sometimes, but I'm going to sit here and shut my mouth. I'm going to take this pen, and I'm going to make a note of every commitment here tonight from everybody. You make the commitment, I'm going to write it down. And when you make the commitment, whoever you are, I'm damn well holding you to it, come hell or high water. So, so we're going to get the problem fixed, because they said they're going to fix it. So I, with you, are going to sit here and listen to commitments to get it fixed. So let's, let's get it fixed. Let's hear it.
Any ca... No. Mr. Cassidy?
Just, you know, I know people have been here long enough, and I hear some of the people that just came into town, and I can tell you, I've lived here for a few years. I've been here since a kid, and I can tell you, this is a good town, and we will fix this problem, come hell or high water, as we said, we will fix this issue. But I, I really want to put to you now, so we can get on with it, and as Counselor Bondi wants to move on with the other delegations, I've got to find out what the commitment is. So let's figure out what the commitment is. Are we going to put a task force together? Are we going to do, move forward, whatever we need? I brought up two or three different ideas, and maybe we can, somebody can put that forward. The task force is what I'd first like to see, that we can move forward. But part of that task force, your worship, has got, well, it came through Mr. Phillips. Part of that task force, Russ, has got to be, that there's got to be some autonomy with that task force to move forward. I mean, if, if it's a task force just sitting in a room, talking about things and not being able to move that frigging needle, then we're pissing against 100 mile an hour wind. Like, it's, it's, we have to have this task force that we can move that needle forward and have some autonomy. And I don't know what those rules and regulations are when it comes to municipalities. So if we can get that moving forward, your worship, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you very much, sir. Mr. Folks?
Yeah, I'm not doing very good at sitting here and shutting up, but I, I agree with the task force, and I want to actually, I want to make a motion, when the time is appropriate, looking for a second or that we, we put in design a task force. I, I have a strong willingness to sit on that, that, that committee if it's, if it's in design. So when the time is right, I will put a motion forward, Mr. Cassidy asking for that, and Renee asking for that task force.
Okay. Is there anything else by any of the council members who would like to make a statement or ask a question or anything like that? or ask a question or anything like that? Counselor Bowman? And then Counselor Baker?
Yeah, I too have been walking around and talking to various people, and I haven't been to everybody's home, but I've been to a lot of them and the issues there. And what I've been telling everybody, I said, "Council, we'll address it." I mean, it has to be addressed. It's an issue that's out there. It's not gonna get any better because, as Mr. Phillips pointed out, we've had some discussion here with the groups, AMO, and Conservation Authorities at a AMO conference this summer. That was one of the main focuses on the changing climate and how it's gonna affect us. And this trend is probably gonna increase, if not, it won't decrease is basically what they're saying, that those changes are gonna stay for some time. So we have to address it, we have to look at it. There's no if, ands, or buts, it's gotta be addressed. How we address it, I'm not sure. And I'm thinking that's where our senior staff is gonna have to come forward with some expertise from outside sources to give us some direction in that way. The task force is probably a great idea, whether it's a little premature or whether it should be, wait a couple of weeks till we get a little more direction there. But I think it's a great idea, and I think it might be better once we look at some of the problems, what form this task force should take, and what type of people should be on it, from a technical aspect and from the citizens group and from the council. And obviously, the council will be a little bit different makeup come December, so that would be my comments.
Counselor Baker?
Thank you, Your Worship. I think what the people here wanna hear is, they wanna hear some timeframes. What Chris has laid out seems to be very reasonable, he has about a five-point plan there, but it's all based on collection of data and issues. What we need to know, first of all, is what can we accomplish within six months or less? And I'm gonna direct this question to Donna, and it comes down to finance. People wanna know, what kind of dollars do we have ourselves in reserve that can address any issues that we may find? That's the first thing. And then where can we go to find the additional amount of money? Should we be... Because in this period of time, we know we're gonna find situations where there's gonna be some solutions. The solutions are gonna cost money. We need to know how much money is there now, what magnitude we have to be able to handle, and then where and how soon can we get this? Because the next round of applications for infrastructure funding may come up, we need to, I think, accelerate it. So it may be council's responsibility to set a motion in place to provide more money to accelerate this, give Chris's department some help so we can accelerate this quicker.
Task force decide.
And that could be part of it, that could be part of it. But we need to find out, first of all...
Let the task force go.
Can I finish, Your Honor? Your Worship, can I finish?
Yep.
Thanks.
Hang on.
But first of all, we need to find out whether when the task force comes up with something with us and the data we're collecting... I'm sorry. I'll just let you finish there, Mr. Cassidy, because I know who you're for, so just go ahead.
David, please.
It's okay, my comment's not gonna go any further anyway, so...
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, Council folks, last time on this topic, okay? For you, I mean.
No, no, I just, again, I was just gonna, to start, to continue the discussions, I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna put a motion forward.
Oh, just before you do that, I'll ask the rest of the council members, they have been... I just have a couple of comments myself.
Yeah, understood, thank you.
Anyone else? Deputy Mayor Malash, or Scott, or Bondi? Okay. Go ahead.
So if I can finish that, I would like to direct my question to administration. What kind of dollars do we have in reserve for emergency situation that we can handle interim fixes for this infrastructure?
Through Your Worship, Counselor Baker, that's a very difficult question because we don't know what the problem is, so I don't know if you're talking sanitary sewer reserves or whether you're talking storm sewers reserves. I'm not sure.
So let's assume both sides, let's assume it's sanitary, that we have a major issue is sanitary. Do we have dollars in reserve for that category?
Through Your Worship, we do have money in reserves. We have life cycle reserves, which are to replace existing infrastructure. Whether or not that would qualify as replacement of existing, I'm not sure, but we do have money. I don't have numbers for you tonight, but we do have money in reserves.
Hey, Bill? Mr. Phillips?
Thank you, through you, Your Worship. I think until we've defined the problem exactly what it is, whether it's sanitary or land drainage storm sewer, it's, knowing what amounts of money we have available really doesn't define or doesn't address that issue. Monies would have to be raised if it's the tax-supported side. I don't think that there's sufficient monies, as what has been mentioned, 1% raises about $100,000. We don't know how large of a problem is out there, if in fact, it's a pipe issue. If it's something having to do with more infiltration issues, there may be other measures that we can look at. Or it could be bylaw, or as Chris had indicated before, Mr. Nepsey had indicated, there's certain measures that people could take, or the town may want to assist in terms of helping out with check valve program. Other communities have done that. I think until we've defined, and I would agree with Mr. Cassidy, until that task force or until the answers are back, it would be very, it would be imprudent on our part right now to try to assign a dollar value to it or where that money is coming from. I think the taxpayers will speak to that once they're given that opportunity, and the council certainly to address that. But if it's a utility operation, it will, it could be partly funded by utility reserves. We don't have a lot, I don't believe, in the tax-supported reserve to be able to address this. So it's one of, we have to first define what the problem is, what the issues are, and I do welcome the notion of a task force, Dave, if we could get something going on that, you know, the sooner the better. I'm willing, our offices are certainly open to that. If that's the direction of council, and I suspect it, one will come here pretty fast. Let's get going on it.
Thank you, sir. Okay, I'll wrap this up before I get back to Counselor Vogts for his motion. Like I'm like everyone else, I've been involved the night of the storm and everything ever since. I've talked to a couple engineers that live in our municipality who would love to be part of a task force. They didn't say task force, but they want to volunteer, you know, their knowledge to us. And Nick Market, everybody knows Nick Market. This guy has done more construction work and everything in our municipality. He knows a great deal. Another guy that wants to be part of the solution that we find to fix our problem here in town. So we're all running for reelection. Whether we get in or not, I don't think there's one guy, just because he didn't get in after six years, 11 years, whatever, we are all gonna be part of this municipality for the rest of our lives, I hope, and we wanna see it come to a solution, this problem. It doesn't matter if we're sitting here or if we're sitting out there. I think we'll all be just like Randy. We'll be out there, you know, beating the table, trying to get it resolved to this problem. So with that said, I'll turn it over to Council folks.
Thank you, Worship. Without delay, I'm gonna, I will put a motion forward that the council of the town of Essex, supported by administration, no later than November 10th, 2014, establish a committee of council to deal with the flooding problems, a task force to deal with the flooding problems. And that committee, in my terms, and I'm open for, I'm open for opportunity to redesign, if you will, but I see that task force consisting of two members of administration, two members of council, and eight taxpayers at large, for a total of 12 people on that committee. And then obviously, if anybody who is not chosen for the committee has interest in participating, you can always attend those meetings and have your opportunity to speak. So that's the way I see it. I would like to that, for that to come to fruition, so I'm asking for a secondar to that motion with hopes of getting that put in place.
Motion on the floor by Council folks, looking for a secondar. Counselor Bowman? Any questions or discussion to the motion? Counselor Bowman, and then Counselor Baker?
I might suggest that the makeup of that committee be more flexible. Obviously, you don't want it overshadowed by anybody, and you want representation from all areas, but you'd want the ability to add people from, I'll say, with expertise in certain areas. So maybe you should say a cross-section of the community and just leave it at that?
Look, I'm fine with whatever way we word it. I truly, I don't wanna sound irresponsible to the committee, but I want a committee. And whoever is in structure of that, I will support and endorse whatever council is suggesting. So if that's a suggestion, Counselor Bowman, then I will support that and get that into the motion.
And the reason I'm saying that, for example, if I'm sitting on that committee, I'm not an expert in any areas of this, so it would be far better to have somebody that has experience in this area, that could be, add to the force rather than somebody like myself that really is not a plumber.
Respectfully understood, and so it's granted.
Okay, Counselor Baker, same comment. Anyone else to the motion? Deputy Mayor Malash?
Just that I, Randy, I think it's a fantastic idea, and I think it's great that we would have a task force. I think November the 10th is the right timeframe, the election will be done, we'll know who's on council at that point in time. We'll have some opportunity here to figure out who at large should be on the committee. And I think there's a lot of people out here who would love to be on this committee, and I've heard some presentations tonight that show me that there's a lot of people that are passionate about this and would do an awesome job at being on a committee like that. We want a solution that comes from the people as well as from administration, so we need a task force that both sides are sitting there, trying to figure out what we're gonna do to resolve this problem. Great idea.
Thank you, sir. Just before I ask a question, there's, one question needs to be asked. Who, if these people wanna sit on that committee, who do they contact? Anyone in the town? Would it be the Mr. Nepsey or anyone in the town? Sure. Okay. Through the clerk, Cheryl Bondi here, so if you wanna write the phone number down right now, 7336-519-776-7336, extension 1132. That's Cheryl Bondi, our clerk, so... Ready for the question? All in favor of that motion? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, council.
And ladies, carried unanimously. Okay, we'll reconvene the meeting, and next presentation is from the Essex Ravens, Glenn Mills, and Brandon Sarchay, Aviva Community Fund All-Seasoned Recreation Complex. So the gentlemen, are they in here?
Yep, they're in front.
Oh, okay. And just as the, oh, the tree is good, Scotty. Just as you're sitting down, before you get set and start speaking, I'd like to address Mr. Mills. I didn't appreciate what you said about one of our council members here, sir, and I hope you're a little more respectful this time because those statements might be okay out there, face to face, but I don't think any one of us in the room appreciated those comments. So they're your comments, but they shouldn't be in this room, I don't feel. So hopefully, you're gonna respect our wishes here as a council, and I'll turn the mic over to you gentlemen right now.
Just wanted to speak to you guys. We recently applied, there's a thing called an AVIA grant that is presently out, it's a $100,000 grant that we recently applied for. That, there's a process you have to go through with votes, and I believe it's a three-month process and things like that, and we're presently doing fairly well in it. We are trying to get a $100,000 grant. We'd like to, we talked about before, trying to find some type of indoor facility. There's an opportunity, there's several different golf domes that you can purchase out there, anywhere from $100,000 to $220,000, depending on the size that, depending on the size that we're looking at and things like that, and we're approaching you guys, hopefully, looking at if there's some type of space available. If we were to be fortunate enough to get the grant, to be able to put up an indoor golf dome structure, and eventually put turf inside of it as well, and have it so that we can do multi-year-round training between baseball, soccer, football, kinda any other type of event that needs to go on can go on there as well. We have talked to soccer, we have talked to baseball, ourselves included, and I think, you know, all of them are on board in regards to definitely could utilize the facility probably from November till early April, at least at the very worst. And I'm sure even, you know, after that, the thing would have no problem being used from even in the summer months.
Thank you, sir. The other two gentlemen, anything to add?
Just for background, I'm good.
That's good, right now? Okay. Counselor Baker? Bill, just before, Mr. Sarchay would like to add a little.
So to touch base with what Glenn said, this is the project, what, I don't know if you're aware what the Aviva Fund is, but the Essex Playground at the Essex Public School was sponsored by this fund. And this is a project with the town. We would like to see the town support. It benefits the town, and the work these gentlemen do on a daily basis is a fundamental part of our town. So, sorry. So that support could go through, you know, anything from being posted, the Aviva Fund being posted on the town website, communication through the town, Adelthus, Community Fund, what all of town could use.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Baker?
Thank you, through Your Worship, to Glenn and the group. Couple questions, two of them on two frames. One on the Aviva Fund and on the actual, what you require in terms of footprint and everything. So on the Aviva Fund, is this his first round? How much are you asking for in the fund?
We actually went, are going for the whole $100,000.
And of course, that's not the total amount you're gonna need, obviously, for your facility, right?
Absolutely not. Depending... The footings to put up the size that we are going for is approximately $32,000. Then obviously, we'd have to be turf inside there and, you know, some modifications in regards to if we needed water or different things like that. But the footings just for the, to erect the dome is $32,000.
So obviously, on the Aviva Fund, this is round one. If you're successful, then you get into the big play, right? So that's why we need a big push for that. Maybe you could instruct or provide administration what actual footprint you might need in terms of property, some dimensions of this. I think I saw something on the web today about the size of the facility. That way, we know ahead of time, and you are successful, even either or, I'm sure you wanna move forward with this, that we can start looking at some opportunities here.
The size of the facility that we're looking at is where we've, for example, we've looked at one coming from Texas, and the footprint of it is actually 160 by 320. Now that's the footprint of the facility itself. And then you have air handling equipment, HVAC systems, power generation, and then also your lead-in from doors. They're vented doors, so they're air-chambered in between so that the facility stays up, and you also have a lobby area that as well.
So then typically, you, there's probably a plan with this that would show how much parking you need and things like that for the type of facility you're doing, right? So I think all that information is good to be able to have as much as you can so that when you do move forward, we're kind of onside to see where we can go with it?
Yes. All these facilities are custom-made, their panels can be added to it, but there is really no standard facility, really. It's what you make, what size you really wanna make it. I've talked with companies here in Canada, down in the southern states and whatnot, and they're still, every one of them are saying that it's all custom to what you want. So if there is an area that it's not quite big enough to fit that footprint in there, we can custom make that down to size.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Bowman?
Yes, and the boys mentioned about the park at the Essex Public School, and that was a joint effort, again, with their group there. It's so important that the community be behind these projects moving forward, so I believe they get points for that, the community participation. The Ravens are a strong organization and have that ability to... The Ravens are a strong organization, and have that ability to go out into the community, to get that support, on the idea of getting people committing, and it takes that type of a group to put its fingers out into the community, and monitor that, keep it going. But as I mentioned before, it's important that the community be behind it as well, and I presume, and from what they're saying, they're looking for a specific spot to put it, and I think that's where our community services director needs to be involved, with the administration, to look at this, and come up with an appropriate spot. I, for one, am totally in favor of us finding a spot, someplace to put it, because I think it's a great facility for our municipality, and moving forward, I think it would be, add not only to the Ravens, but to our community.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Voges?
Thank you, worship. You know, I got to tell you, it's extremely funny what an election does, because last time we were here, last time Glenn was here, and last time the Ravens were speaking, on doing something as it relates to a facility, to enhance the ability for Ravens put a better game for it, not that they need to, we wanted to see a business plan. I didn't hear nothing mentioned here tonight, Glenn, about a business plan, must be the election in place. But with that being said, is, Glenn, what's your timeframe? What's the timeframe, and we're aware of the Aviva program, because we were part and partial setting that up last time, with the people from Maplewood, on the Aviva program, so we're fully in understandance of how that, those projects work. But if I could, Glenn, what's your timeframe, that you tendly would be looking at, from today, to erection of this dome, if the real estate was given to you? What's the?
Go ahead, Glenn, go ahead.
Sorry, the grant, the grant, I believe runs out around January, already, then realistically, probably, to get everything set up, you're probably looking at, I'm probably thinking fall next year, right? By the time it's all set up, and ready to go, and, I mean, maybe, I don't know if you could go before that, but I'm probably thinking September next year, or something like that, if all goes well.
So, so whether it was this council at hand, actually, the truth is, prior to myself not being able to attend council last month, at the conclusion, one of our council meetings, I said specifically to council, we need to prepare, and to do two things. One is, to see a suggested business plan, as requested, from the Ravens, and from some military mustard, because they, both people had interest in that particular piece of real estate. So whatever reason, this council wanted to see a business plan, and I had said that time, if they don't submit a business plan, then this council has to come to the following council meeting, with, in readiness, to make a decision on two things. One's tearing down the Essex Arena, the other's tearing down the Silos. Because we just, we carry on, a lot more than we should be carrying on about doing stuff, and the ultimate end of that is expenses in doing that. Just decide, and bear the sword that becomes of it. So, I would ask you, what's wrong with the arena property, in the event we were to tear it down, and use that particular piece of real estate, and is there anything there that would also be an asset to you?
I think, property-wise, it would probably actually be a fairly decent place, especially once the building was taken down, the base floor, of the pad that's already there, and things like that, I think would definitely be an asset to helping out with part of the foundation, and things like that. The one thing that, you know, we also, we're going to currently do, is we're going to try and make a, maybe like an Essex recreational group, so the one thing with these funds is, if you can get more people on board, in regards to recreational groups, you have a greater opportunity to get these, right? So that's why we approached baseball, we also approached Harold Soccer ourselves, so you get more points, as we talked about, in the grant, and different things like that, so that's one of the things we want to also try and start up, is a recreational group of Essex, that would do, you know, help feed this program as well.
I just, I'm going to suggest to council, that before we leave here tonight, that in terms of pushing the envelope forward, and moving the needle, that we look at opportunities to put something in, in principle. And principle is suggesting that the council supports it, and has a strong willingness to move forward with it, because without that, we don't have anything. So I think, accepting the consideration in principle is the way to go, and in the interim of all that, it will allow us opportunity to define real estate opportunities, to put it in, and also recognize them, there could be a new council coming on board, and they will inherit that in-principle consideration, so it will already be there for you, when you get there.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Sweet, Director of Community Services, please.
Through you, worship. Glenn did contact me about this program, and, because they wanted, there's a grant deadline, so I did follow through with our CO, and basically, on previous discussions, repurposing Essex Arena, is our feeling, from what we heard from council, was, maybe the arena wasn't a good fit, but a dome could be. So I said, in principle, go ahead with the grant. Since then, we haven't communicated in terms of land, or anything, and it's a key for, if it's going to be located in Essex Center, partners, but also, we are landlocked in green spaces, so a place like Essex Memorial Arena, we'd have to look at it, but I definitely have to work with the group, in terms of details, and size, and amenities, and that has not happened yet. So we'd love to work with them, to see where we can go, but nothing has been set, and I think that's determined, if it will be in Essex Center, we are limited where it can go to.
So if I could, your worship, when the time is right, I will put a motion in principle for it.
Counselor Scott?
Thank you, worship, and I, just to keep it simple, I think they're just looking for our support tonight, to win this project, so let's support them and do that, for sure, I'm all behind that, and then we can, you know, work out where we're going to put this, and all the details later, but if you're going to make that motion, then I won't, but I think that's what they're looking for, and why not support it? This is a good deal. It helped us tremendously last time, it's all going to be about partnerships, so I fully support it. Let's move forward with it.
Anyone else? Counselor Voges, supported by Counselor Scott. Put it in, Randy, or you did, I guess, already. Okay. Pretty well, you got it? Right, okay. So everyone knows what the motion was?
So I just, if I could, your worship, two seconds, so Glenn, and everybody here tonight, you understand by accepting this in principle as a council, we endorse it, we support it, and it allows us now to move forward with it, okay? I just want to make sure you understand the principle policy of it, before you, okay, good, thanks.
Anything else to the motion? All in favor of the motion? Motion carried, 100%. Thank you, gentlemen. Anything further?
If I could, Glenn, and all those involved, I think Doug has already shown a willingness to work, and I know, obviously, Mr. Phillips has always had a willingness to work with everybody in town, so as the time arises, make sure you stay in contact with those two gentlemen, and we'll get this project completed.